Good morning, everybody. I want to call this meeting of the Lane County Board of Commissioners to order for Wednesday, April 22nd. And this is a regular meeting of the board. And we've got our usual agenda here, but it's kind of a special meeting today as we interview our candidates for the appointment to interim sheriff. So first, I'd like to ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda for the board. Since there's no adjustments to the agenda, we'll move straight to item two, which is public comments. And I've so far got six folks signed up for public comment. And if you want to come and sit at the table where the microphones will pick you up when you address the board and state your name and the city you're from, and then I'll start with three minutes here. So the first person signed up was Jennifer Gill.
Good morning. Thanks for the opportunity. I see that there's a lot of professional reference type people.
State your name and--
Jennifer Gill, and I live in Lane County.
Thank you.
I know Byron Trapp both mostly on a personal level, but 11 years that I worked for Eugene Police Department, I also had some time to interact with him professionally. But I wanted to speak more about the personal side because what I would like to see in a sheriff is somebody who is even, calm, well-tempered. And that's the best thing I can tell you about Byron Trapp is that he is--that's the one word I would be able to use to describe him, who is even. He is ethical. I've seen him--he's been very close with our family for quite some time. And my husband works for the Sheriff's Department as well. So I've had the opportunity to observe him in several different types of situations. He is not easily angered. He's not somebody who speaks without thinking. He is very introspective and very thoughtful person, and I think he would make a great sheriff. I've also worked for Tom Turner when I worked for the City of Eugene, and I can tell you that he is along the same lines of that calm, even, that you have experienced with the sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lori Duckworth.
Good morning. My name is Lori Duckworth, and I actually just moved up pretty quickly from Metford, Oregon. And I would just like to know who the candidate stands on marijuana in the community and the new bill law that's going to be going into effect. As many of you know, we just had a sheriff's race down there in Southern Oregon that was quite heated, and we have a new sheriff in town down there. So that is really what I, as an activist here in the state, would like to know about the new sheriff that's going to be in town.
Thank you. And next, we have Paul Solomon.
For the record, my name is Paul Solomon. I live in Eugene, Oregon. Chair Bozovic, and here's the good question. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I'm the executive director at Sponsors, Oregon's oldest reentry service provider where I've worked for the last 14 years. I'm also the vice chair of Lane County's Public Safety Coordinating Council. I serve on Lane County's Homelessness and Poverty Board, Governor's Reentry Council, and many other boards and committees related to public safety. I'm here today to express my wholehearted support for Chief Deputy Byron Trapp's application to serve as Lane County Sheriff. I've had the pleasure of working more closely with Byron in recent years and believe that he is well-equipped to make a seamless transition from his current post as chief deputy to sheriff. Chief Deputy Trapp and Trapp and I served together on Lane County's Homelessness and Poverty Board, as well as various committees of the PSEC. I have a number of reasons for supporting his appointment. Through his 27-year career at the sheriff's office, he has worked his way through the ranks, in respect to his peers, those he has supervised, local law enforcement officials, elected officials, social service providers, and members of the public. He is thoughtful and conscientious in his approach to working with social service providers in the community. Most importantly, he is committed to using our limited public safety resources in the most cost-effective and efficacious manner possible, in which vein he recognizes that our jail beds are a limited resource and a tool that needs to be used judiciously in combination with treatment and other support services designed to change offender behavior. He also understands the value of working cooperatively, leveraging resources and supports from partner agencies. Furthermore, he is approachable, knowledgeable, and able to work with a wide variety of constituents, wherein I cannot think of a better person to lead the future campaign to remove the jail levy when that day comes. It is important that we have a proven leader in the position and someone who understands the unique institutional history of the sheriff's office and is able to effectively foster positive change that enhances public safety for all of Lane County's residents. Byron Trapp is that person. I offer my highest personal recommendation and look forward to working with Chief Deputy Trapp as our future sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you. And Greg Heser, comedian, sorry. I always knew that, Greg. I apologize.
No problem. Good morning, Chair Bozovic, commissioners. I am Greg Heser, comedian. I'm the executive director of Public Defender Services of Lane County Incorporated. We don't do a lot of business together because I'm the head of a nonprofit agency, a law firm that is funded by the state government, not county government. But having said that, I do--we do work with the Sheriff's Department quite a bit, and I have worked with, in the 10 years I've had this job, Sheriff Berger, Turner, and hopefully Trapp in the future. Sheriff Berger and Turner have established a tradition of being very collaborative around issues of common interest between my office and the Sheriff's Department. I know that--what I know of Byron Trapp tells me that that collaborative tradition will continue once he becomes sheriff. He's very well-respected within his own department and in other agencies that you're here in this morning. I've talked to several members of the Sheriff's Department and at different levels within that department and not heard anything different from anybody I've spoken to. I think what's important for the county, given some of the recent upheaval, is having a smooth transition, and I think Byron Trapp represents that smooth transition. Chief Deputy Trapp has the pre-existing relationships in this county that are needed for a smooth transition. He will not have to meet people. He will not have to form those relationships. He will get the ground running and ready. I urge you to select him for sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Larry Trapp, it looks like?
Yes.
He could say a little more. Maybe he's setting his trap.
Oh, thanks. Thank you for allowing the public to have an input on this selection. I've retired from the sheriff's office. I've been 26 years, been retired for 20, so I've been acquainted with Chief Deputy Trapp since, for seven years I worked with him prior to my retirement. I remember holding his two children in my arms. They're in college, so it's been a while. And you have to respect someone who worked their way up through the ranks and become chief deputy, who's well-deserved. I remember when we called this young deputy, "Slit-sleeve, no sergeant stripes or anything." He went right up through the ranks, and I know, still stay in touch now and then when we have retirement here. And I have the utmost confidence in him to be a good leader, a good sheriff, and just a no-brainer to appoint this gentleman because he has been here so long and he knows the county, as further folks testified before me, much more eloquent than I am, but they had some incidents regarding him that I think is very well-deserved, and I urge you folks to appoint him as the new sheriff. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And next, we have Tom Turner.
I put my glasses in. Hopefully, I wrote it in big enough font that I could see it. Chair, Board of County Commissioners, County Administrators, my name is Tom Turner. I'm currently the sheriff here in Lane County, 125 East Eight, Eugene, Oregon. I am so thrilled at this opportunity for us to move forward as a county. I respect the right of the board to decide who to appoint into my position. What I'm here today is I'm here to encourage the most seamless process available to keep the continuity of the sheriff's office intact. I have every confidence that Chief Deputy Byron Trapp will prevail whatever process is followed. Byron Trapp is simply the only realistic choice. This internal and external continuity planning has been going on for over a year. Chief Deputy Trapp is ready. I have been honored to serve in this position, but I have to tell you, this is one of the toughest jobs I have ever had. A sheriff's job is created specifically and uniquely for every county. I have talked with numerous sheriffs all over the state and all over the country, and although there are many similarities, it is clear that each sheriff's job is tailor-made for his or her county. In addition to needing the current law enforcement experience for this job, you also have to be the chief elected and only law enforcement officer in the county. Frankly, this brings on challenges that this position, that can be monumental, delivering a very difficult, litigation-bound, expensive service, often by force, to a public in a highly-charged political environment, all culturally different, depending on your area, and willing to have the courage to be that political leader as well as a law enforcement leader. Chief Trapp has been by my side and served in my role constantly for the past year and has shown this consummate ability in this unusual mixed arena. As I mentioned, experience and training does help, but the person who is truly created for this job is the one that's been at the helm. Chief Deputy Trapp has been at every turn and course setting that we have navigated at the sheriff's office to this point and where we are today, and that cannot be replicated. We are, for the first time in a long time, ahead of the game. Even this meeting is evidence that we, as a county, are doing things right because we are planning ahead. We're not in a crisis mode anymore. But delay in the decision would be deadly to an organization's morale and momentum. Thankfully, we are not often faced with life-and-death decisions at the sheriff's office, but we have been, and we could be at any time, but we're in this meeting, for instance. But we are faced every day with bizarre and difficult funding choices, causing us to restructure how we deliver services, often in incredibly short time frames, keeping the public appraised and informed, as well as making the difficult political choices facing our county and country. And we want a person who is most ready to be able to step into this position and take over, with not only the life-and-death decision-making ability, but the ability to run a very unique and flexible organization, who knows all of the nuances of the county, and is well-known and proven to you and the community we serve, as well as having all the capabilities in the world as a law enforcement officer, Chief Deputy Byron Trapp.
Thank you. Looks like you got a few more. And we have Alex Gardner.
Good morning, Chair Bozovic, members of the commission. In the interest of expediency, I want to just adopt Paul Solomon's testimony because he very eloquently highlighted the collaboration that's so critical in Lane County. We often say that Lane County is sort of the twilight zone for law enforcement. The challenges here are unique. The environment is unique. Frankly, the staffing circumstance is unique. As most of you know, the sheriff's office police services staffing has been cut by 80%, while the population of Lane County has grown 25%. And so we're sort of--we're in a situation in which the collaboration is critical to making the situation, the system function as we limp forward to improvement. And Chief Deputy Trapp has been part of that collaboration, and he understands the system. And there are so many dimensions of our system that are unique, from the funding challenges to the ways in which we work the state funding relationships, like the Community Corrections Act money. That's not something somebody from the outside can come and adapt to easily. It's familiarity with all the system and the players in the system and our partners and other parts of the state that's critical. So I can't be more enthusiastic about recommending Chief Deputy Trapp, and I'm keeping my fingers crossed that the board can make its decision promptly. Thank you.
Thank you. So that was everyone I had signed up to speak. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board this morning? We have the last couple of people coming in. Did they want to address the board during public comment? Or you want to have a seat and state your name and where you're from, and then you'll have your three minutes.
I'm Scott Palmer. I'm a local attorney. I'm also the municipal judge for the city of Crestwell. I've been doing that for 31 and 1/2 years. I'm here to speak in favor of the board appointing Byron Trapp as the next sheriff of Lane County. I've had contact with Brian, not only through Rotary, but also through the city of Crestwell contract. I think he would be an outstanding sheriff. He's responsible. He's a great leader, and I think he would be a tremendous asset, and I think you all should take advantage of that asset and appoint him as the next sheriff.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. Anyone else that wishes to address the board this morning? With that, then, we will close public comment and move on in our agenda. And before we bring the first candidate in for the interview, I want to just real quickly review the process with the board and make sure that we are prepared for the two candidates. The candidates will get five minutes to introduce themselves and tell the board whatever they want to know, and then we have four prepared questions for the candidates. Now, it's just going to have, you know, starting with Commissioner Farrar and skipping me, work our way around, have you guys ask the questions, one, two, three, four, in that order, and have the same person ask the same question to both candidates. And then after the candidate's responded to the question, you'll be allowed, you know, opportunity to follow up to that question if you desire to. And we'll just try and move through the questions. When we finish with the first candidate, then that candidate will leave the room. We'll bring the second candidate in. We'll run the same process. After we're finished the two interview processes in the public meeting, then we're going to recess in the executive session to deliberate. So is that understood by everybody? And with you, Farrar, you'll be the one with the first question, so I'll look to you first. With that, I think I'll ask our HR staff to go fetch the first candidate here. And I think we're going to have the candidates sit relatively close to the board. I don't want--it's kind of tough to interact all the way down at that end, and we have a mic up at this end also. And I just want to real quick say I appreciate everybody that came in for the public comment. It's always good to have the public's input on a big decision like this. And I just want to say hi to Scott Palmer as he leaves. Scott Palmer, I go way back to riding tandem bicycles together with our wives. So it's a long time, 1992. Lori, welcome. Have a seat there. We'll be giving you your five minutes here to tell us about yourself and give us your pitch, and then we'll be doing a series of four questions. Each board member will ask that question, and there'll be follow-ups possibly to the questions, and we'll be asking the same questions to the other candidate in the same process. So I will now turn it over to you, unless you have your five minutes to tell us about yourself, so.
I have five minutes, and I'll do my best to tell you about myself. But what's more important for me today is to talk about what's at stake here. Today is the day that you're going to start your process in deciding who's going to be the sheriff of Lane County until the next election in May of 2016, which is appropriate. The question for me that I sense from my perspective has to be what you feel are the needs in the community. Now, let me stop right there. I want to say that Byron Trapp and I know each other professionally, and no matter what you decide, both of us are competent, capable law enforcement leaders, and the sheriff's office will be in good hands with either one of us. I want to be upfront with that. The choice that I see you having to make boils down to, do you believe there is a need for injection of new bloods, a new perspective, a fresh outlook into the sheriff's office or not? To me, that's what's at stake here, and simple. To give you an idea of my perspective at the sheriff's office, current mission statement is to conserve the peace. My law enforcement career, five and 1/2 years as a chief in Florence and 22 years down in Stanislaus County. We had the mission of keeping the peace in partnership with the community, and to me, in my perspective, you have to marry those two together. It's critically important. And the reason I say that is because with the funding issues that are facing the county and the sheriff's office, and I'm aware that federal road funds are going to be reduced or scheduled to be reduced, which will have a direct adverse impact upon delivery of police services in the county, what do we do with that, then? Do we look at reducing policing services? Because we don't build things in government. We provide service, and it's the only way you can respond to a cutback in funding is to reduce service levels. Do we want to do that? Do we want to go out to the community and partner with them for what has been afforded before, the idea of a special policing district levy, much like the jail did? And it all comes into being in a coordinated effort and partnership with the community, like I said before. Now, there are other options you can look at internally. Are there duplication of services within the sheriff's office of the county that can be resolved and free up money to put additional patrol deputies in place? There may be contracts throughout the jail services that could be reviewed, and perhaps there are opportunities there to save money and reevaluate how business is done. But what it comes down to, and it's difficult with only five minutes, is I have found in my law enforcement career, the successes I've had as a leader boil down to certain attributes. Obviously, honesty and integrity are critical for any law enforcement officer, but the leadership attributes to deal with the kind of problems that are faced by top leadership, executive leadership boil down to innovation, being innovative. I was fortunate enough to convert the Florence City Jail from a temporary lockup to a full correctional facility when the county was having difficulty holding offenders accountable. Stanislaus County implementing a wireless AFIS fingerprint system in a patrol car to allow deputies to identify suspects in the field without having it printed. Things like that. Innovation. Not being afraid to ask questions. Not being afraid to try something new and different. And going out into the public, being visible, accessible, approachable, and most importantly, engaged and engaged passionately in the operation to provide the best delivery of services you can to protect the community. Those leadership attributes is what I have developed through my career to help me be a better leader for those that I was fortunate enough to lead. And the successes in my doing that has allowed me to maintain a very strong commitment to a high standard of excellence. A broad collaboration, dealing with law enforcement officers in local area, regional areas such as the Cal Chiefs Organization, the Oregon Chiefs Association, Cal State Sheriff's Association, Oregon State Sheriff's Association, whatever the needs were met to broaden those horizons and to draw upon that expertise to get as much information and ideas as possible. One leader cannot think of it all, but a broad-based team can certainly do best. It has also taught me to hold people accountable and hold myself accountable to the people. And finally, it allows me to have a broad collaborative leadership style where I can develop the leaders of tomorrow today. I don't know if that's five minutes, but I did the best I could to open it up to questions.
Five seconds short. Amazing timing. So Commissioner Farrar has the first question.
Thank you. Chief Sanders, my question, I have a single question in three parts. Some of it's going to be a bit redundant. You've covered some of the answers already in your presentation, but please answer them again in the same words, different words, if you need to. From what you know about our community in the sheriff's department, what do you feel is the most pressing issue that we face? I'll follow that up with how will you go about identifying the department's strengths and weaknesses, and then how will you go about making changes? So start with it. What are the most pressing issues?
Well, the most pressing issues, in my opinion, from my perspective, is the funding issues, the challenges to deliver services. A workforce that is unsure if they're going to have a job tomorrow, and the public not knowing if they're going to have law enforcement services out there to meet the need is critically important. But the funding issues is probably the top priority. Now, the strengths and weaknesses in identifying that in the department is that the question that's at stake. Well, when you become the sheriff, obviously, it's incumbent upon you to--it's like when I became the chief. You meet with the people. I met with the individual officers, the dispatchers, the clerk. I met with the bargaining unit, as a bargaining unit. I wanted to find out how they saw the agency, what suggestions they would have, how they saw the world. In the sheriff's office, I would do the same thing, but I'd also go to the sergeants. I would go to the lieutenants. I would go to the civilian managers. I'd go to the two captains. I would go to Chief Deputy Trapp. I'd ask them the same question. How do they see the world? Where do they see the successes, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats? I would go to the local Lane County law enforcement leadership, and I want to get an outside perspective. It's been three years since I've been in this game. I'd want to hear from them, how they see it as well. Then I'd want to go to the elected officials. Obviously, you folks as the Board of County Commissioners have unique perspectives, and there's other elected officials that are equally as involved in here that you'd want to go off of. People that may have an attitude and a perception about the sheriff's office, so that could be used not only to gain the information, but perhaps clear up any misconceptions or preconceived notions. Now, once you identify those strengths and weaknesses, that may be challenging the staff to, you know, play it out, and let's talk about a plan of action. When I, in Florence--I shouldn't say this here, but I will. We took the city away from the county's regional information system because it was too expensive for the city. And collectively, with the lines, the entire department staff chose a new report management system, a new CAD system that we could pay for, and after two years, had that money that we would have been continuing to pay to the county, we pulled it back and was able to use it for staffing, reserve staffing levels. So it's things like that that you can do, but you have to involve it at all levels of the organization to make any changes. You cannot just be pink for who can say this is the way it's going to be. It doesn't work that way. You've got to have a true partnership and a true collaborative effort to make things happen. That's why I'd answer your question.
And you covered all three parts very well. Very organized. Thank you very much. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Sanders, thank you very much for allowing me for this position. As you may or may not know, I served as mayor for 10 years as well, for serving--so this is before serving as a board here on the Board of Commissioners. So this question kind of goes along those lines. So tell us about your experience with public engagement, and please include the groups you have worked with and how you have built and maintained those relationships.
I'm not sure how far back you want me to go. I'll just start at the beginning. 1983, I became a reserve deputy sheriff. I committed myself to learning what it's like to be a street cop, doing what the elements of society you do, and I made a lot of friends and contacts in the Modesto Police Department at that time, which enabled me to become a deputy sheriff at the Stanislaus County Sheriff's Office. I became a field training officer to allow me to develop my leadership styles, and then ultimately, the sergeant, and rise through the ranks of the organization. And when you rise through the ranks of the organization, your responsibilities increase and the scope of your influence increases. The first truly opportunity I had dealt with being the chief of police services in a small community called Houston, California, where I got to work with a city council and a group of city staff outside of the sheriff's department. Building upon that and the successes there, I got elevated to the assistant sheriff role at the sheriff's office-- at the sheriff's office, which was then a well over 600-person organization and a total budget of over $80 million. Dealing with that, you're dealing with county staff. You're dealing with city councils, because we had four contract, policing contracts with the various cities. You're dealing with the DA's office. You're dealing with different types of service organizations. You're dealing with the Rotary, the Kiwanis. You broaden it completely. You just make yourself accessible and visible to them, like I mentioned before. They learn that you're approachable, and they can talk to you and tell you things that normally they wouldn't. And you broaden that further. Coming up to Florence, I now had a large network I could draw from down in California, and immediately, I developed similar relationships here in Lane County and throughout the state with the Oregon Chiefs of Police Association, with other chiefs throughout the state, being part of the Oregon Accreditation Alliance and such. Heavily involved in the community, going out as the chief of police, having coffees that allow the public to meet me and speak to me openly and candidly without fear of formality. Make, lay yourself open to the public to let them know who you are and what you are, and not be afraid to tell you. Because sometimes, in leadership roles, I have found as a law enforcement leader, sometimes you get told bad things. You're told things you really don't want to hear, but you have to hear it, and you have to listen to it, and then maybe you have to take action on it. So when bad things happen, at least you have developed with all these relationships a high level of public trust and confidence. Because, like I said before, keeping the peace in partnership with the community, that's the only way I know of to maintain a high level of public trust. Now, what have I done now to continue those relationships in my last three years outside of law enforcement? I'm a member of Rotary in the Florence Club, broadly based, a huge Rotary club, broadly based to the community. As a matter of fact, they found out from the registered guard that I was going for this interview, and I must have had 20 or 30 calls before you. You know, "Good going. Thank you for applying." Those relationships are still out there. I'm the elected commander of the American Legion post out there. And I've taken that leadership role and taken it a step further. We just incorporated as a group of us to create a Florence-area Veterans Relief Agency to provide emergency limited relief to veterans, just by getting a group of people together and going out to the community with the contacts and getting money coming in to help do that. I'm also the elected city councillor. Like you're, you're the mayor and you're the county commissioner. I understand what it's like to run for election. I understand what it's like to be in that type of role where you are, you know, the target of, you know, people's perceptions, good or bad. But everywhere I've gone, I've always valued every person I've met as a potential relationship that could be fostered into our resource into the future. I hope that answers your question.
Again, thank you. And if any other board member has a follow-up, time in after the response. Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Chief Sanders. Good to see you again. I spent a while since we worked together on the FCC and other apps, so thank you for being here. My question is, tell us about your experience building a public safety team. What steps did you take, and what did you consider in your decision?
I've been blessed to have been part of teams and then become the leader of it internally. When I became the chief of police in Florence, I had to go as an outsider into a small, family atmosphere group of people. I had to prove myself to those people, and that meant to the lieutenant, who was not successful in getting the job where I was, the two sergeants, the patrol officers, and to the dispatch staff and admin staff. And walking into that, I was faced with the challenge of creating a public safety team. And what I did is I made sure I spoke to each one. I wanted to find out, first of all, what were their dreams and aspirations and career goals? I had to know where they were at. I wanted to find out from them where they saw the department going and how they saw, how they fit in with the mission of the department. And I posed a question to them, if you were king for a day or queen for a day, what would you do? What would you wave your hand and change? Very interesting responses. Then I went out to the community and had some of them join me to listen to the public input. Because what I found is, what their perceptions were, they're not necessarily in line with what the public was thinking, and it was eye-opening. Then we posed questions, and I'll give you an example. Lane County's sheriff's office was basically a catch-and-release mode for offenders to the jail, a revolving door. That posed a dangerous threat to the safety of the citizens of Florence that I was responsible with protecting. Put it to the members of the department, what would it take to convert the temporary lockup to a fully operational local correction facility under the Oregon advice statute and Oregon administrative rules to govern it? Is this something we can do? There was a split between the officers, but the leadership of the Employees Association and my references are the president and vice president of the Florence Police Employees Association that can address this with you. They were for it. They saw the benefit of having that jail able to hold offenders accountable when the county couldn't, because it would eliminate a lot of repeat calls for service. It would make their jobs easier in the long run by taking the step. Because that attitude and environment was created, I had a patrol officer, I delegated the task, and I empowered him to do what he felt was necessary in his judgment to make it happen. And by God, he did. And it was the biggest number-one success out there. The people loved that jail. They thought it was the best thing since sliced bread. That's just one example that I can give you. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. Thank you for the description of how you changed the jail from a lockup to a correction office. How did you find the money to do that?
It was just reallocating the resources that I had. It cost maybe an extra couple of thousand dollars just to do some minor changes, like creating a visitor's room that, you know, have a window and a block, center block, and have in two separate rooms, things like that. Just a couple of thousand dollars, but the day to operation was the same. The officers did their hourly checks. I, as the chief, would go in there and do hourly checks. I would feed inmates. I would be part of the team. I would be jumping right in the middle of it to make it work, because we were all, we all had agreed in this vision of how this jail would operate, and we made it happen together, not just in person, but we all did.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Barr. Yeah, we, the board used to do tours of all the jails and lockups within the county. It was state statute required, and that's a, I've done both for lockup and the jail.
You know what I'm talking about.
Right. Fourth question is, describe the kind of organization for which you'd like to work. If you could be, if you changed one thing in your current and most recent position, what would it be?
Well, I know that the Lane County Sheriff's Office is an excellent organization. It's been cut down to the, you know, it's lean, maybe cutting down to the bone if you do any further, but you've got a group of people that are energetic. They want to do a good job. They want to, they want to make the county safe. They want to do their part, so you have that there. Now, your question about the recent organization, I'm not sure how to answer it. You've got to remember, for the last three years, I'd been retired and enjoying the retired life. And my organization is my wife and her three cats. Other than that, if you go back to Florence...
Well, in your most recent position, what would you like to change? Not in your current position.
Okay. I'll buy that. Sorry, I had to interject a little bit. In my past organization, I had proposed a reorganization that I felt would have benefited the line officers by, instead of having a top-heavy management, once you would have a chief and a commander instead of a chief lieutenant and two sergeants, you would have a chief, a commander, and four corporals, and you put line supervisory responsibility on the corporals. In other words, you would be creating opportunities for the line officers to advance that otherwise would never get it. You could challenge them more projects, empower them to experiment, try things that are new and different, even fail. It's okay. It's all part of their development. That did not get the traction with the bargaining unit, even though it would have given them more money and a voice in how the organization is being run and managed day-to-day. That would be one thing I would have liked to have changed, but I was unsuccessful.
You attempted to flatten the organization chart, and they did not...
I wanted to put more cops on the road.
Any follow-up from the board? Well, Chief Sanders, I'd like to thank you for applying and coming in. We've got your full background and resume. We had that in advance, so we've been able to examine your record and all that. And I really appreciate you applying for the position. It's kind of an interesting thing, because, you know, I've known you for years, and I've known Chief Deputy Trapp for years. So we've got two law enforcement professionals with long careers in history and experience in commands, and it's nice to have that choice in front of the board, and I appreciate you coming in. We're going to bring in Chief Deputy Trapp next and go through the same process we just went through with you, and then we're going to be going into executive session to deliberate.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity. I applied because I wanted you all to know I had certain skill sets, and if it's what you felt was needed for the county, I wanted to offer it, because this is my home. I live in the rural part of the county. If I can help make it better, I'm here for you. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's leave pause while we're switching candidates here. If members of the board need to slip out for a moment, I will understand. Apologize for my phone going off, but it got commuted. That was a text from Chief Kearns saying he was apologizing for not making it here in time to testify during the public comment portion. So that was, you saw him slip in and out, so if you're wondering what that was, it was actually related to the meeting.
Jay, you taught me how to silence my phone.
I know. What happens is I forget sometimes, and then I silence it, and then I will forget to turn it back on, and I miss calls the rest of the day. Just as...
The teacher becomes the student.
Yeah. It's just the same...
Right. Yeah. Which is...
Technology is great, but sometimes we become a crutch.
They work from the role of being the chair.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
As I explained to Chief Saunders, we're going to give you five minutes to introduce yourselves and kind of give us your pictures of why we should be appointing you. And then we're going to ask a series of four questions and possible follow-ups. Each commissioner will ask the question, and it's the same questions that were asked of Chief Saunders. So it's a fair process, and, you know, we'll work our way around with questions and any follow-ups. And then after we're done there, we'll probably recess into executive session to deliberate as board on our decision. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, and I'll start the timer when you start speaking.
Thank you. Sheriff Bozovic, commissioners, good morning, and thank you for your time today. As you know, I'm here seeking the appointment to the office of sheriff of Lane County. I have honorably served this community for more than 27 years as a member of the Lane County Sheriff's Office. I'm committed to the public safety of Lane County and the Lane County Sheriff's Office. Under the leadership of Sheriff Turner, the sheriff's office has seen great successes in preserving and stabilizing Lane County public safety. However, we all know there is much work yet to be done. I have been fortunate to have been a part of our successes, and I am well-positioned to continue those efforts. I look forward to continuing progress in the years ahead. I have been part of the development of the county's 10-year public safety plan, and I understand the challenges we face here. I understand efforts in rebuilding our public safety services must provide for a balanced service level across the public safety system and a coordinated approach with all of our public safety partners. As sheriff, I will be a committed partner to the public safety plan, and the sheriff's office will continue to be an active participant in guiding our future. The sheriff's office staff is engaged in our future, and they are excited to continue the recent progress we have made. The sheriff's office is staffed with incredible people of incredible character, and there are many willing to take the leadership roles and challenges as we move the organization forward. It is important we provide opportunity and allow our staff to develop in order to retain the talent that we have, and I am committed to do so. You can keep this momentum going and prevent unnecessary setbacks by maintaining the continuity of operations and staffing within the sheriff's office. This is crucial to continuing our progress. I have a great deal to offer as the candidate for sheriff. I have a depth of knowledge of the Lane County Sheriff's Office held by very few. In my 27 years with the sheriff's office, I have served in many assignments and have held every rank, from deputy sheriff to chief deputy. I have over 19 years of supervisory and management experience, and I have strong support from employees of all ranks in the sheriff's office. I have forged strong relationships within this community over my many years here. I have enjoyed strong and supportive relationships with all law enforcement partners, local, state, and federal. I am familiar with Lane County government, and I enjoy good working relationships with all the department directors and the county's management team. I exceed the qualifications required to hold the office of sheriff in Lane County. In my application packet, you will find a letter from the Oregon Department of Public Safety Standards and Training confirming my eligibility to hold this office. I have over 4,150 recorded hours of law enforcement training. I hold the highest police officer certification available in the state of Oregon, certified as an executive-level police officer through the Oregon Department of Public Safety Standards and Training. I want a safe and healthy community. I live here. My family lives here. My friends live here. I met and married my wife of nearly 25 years here. My wife grew up here. She went to school here, and she works here. Our children were born here. They were raised here, and they live here. We have lived in our home over 21 years. This is a home in rural Lane County. I understand what it means to be a customer of Lane County services, including its public safety. We have been touting open and transparent government here in Lane County. I am a transparent candidate. What you see is what you get. My personnel file will back that up. My personnel file is fully available for your review. You might find it maybe a little boring. There's a couple of commendations, many years of evaluations, and most of them are pretty good. You won't find any discipline records. In my 27 years, I have not been the subject of an internal affairs investigation or complaint, nor have I received formal discipline. I hope what you see in the absence of these records is character. I hope you see a commitment to quality law enforcement. I hope you see the pride I have in serving this community. The following may be familiar to you. It's an excerpt from the county's 2014 to 17 strategic plan. It says, "Pride is the feeling you get through hard work and great results. Pride is about taking care to do things right for the right reasons. It's about having trust in our officials, feeling secure with law enforcement and emergency services, being safe on our roads and highways. It is about the belief that we work better together and that we share a connection to this place, that we are pride and proud to call Lane County home." I was Lane County proud long before it was a county model. To be considered for the office of sheriff is an incredible honor. Thank you for considering me.
Wow. One second. You guys have amazing timing. So, thank you, Byron. With that, I'm going to turn to Commissioner Farr, who has the first question.
Chief Deputy Trapp, thank you for being here this morning. You covered a number of the things that I'm going to ask you in my question you've covered during your presentation, ask me to restate them, elaborate if you wish. One question in three parts. I'll give you all three parts, and then give you a chance to respond. From what you know about the community in the sheriff's office, what do you feel is the most pressing issue that we face? Second part will be, how do you go out identifying the department's strengths, its weaknesses, and opportunities for improvement? And once you've identified them, how are you going to go about making changes? So the first part is, what's the most pressing issue that we face? So the first part is, what's the most pressing issue that we face?
Well, I believe the most pressing issue we face, the same issue we've faced for about 30 years, is resources. Government, certainly the Sheriff's Office, is a service-oriented entity. We don't make devices or widgets. When we have to scale back, because our resources scale back, we scale back service. And this is a direct impact to our community. The most pressing issue is to continue to pursue efforts on this 10-year public safety plan, not just for the Sheriff's Office, although that's a credible honor, but for the public system as a whole in Lane County. Department's strengths and weaknesses. I think our strengths, without a doubt, are our people, our commitment to providing high-quality services with limited results or limited resources in incredible trying times. And our staff does that day in and day out, and that's what will always make us successful. Again, I think the weaknesses go back to resource and the ability to strengthen the resource, to provide higher-quality services, more comprehensive services across the spectrum of public safety. You know, I thought about the changes. I don't have sweeping changes in mind. I think we are on a stable trajectory. We have made successes. I think we are on a trajectory to continue that success if we continue to focus our efforts in very specified areas, follow the strategic planning and the public safety plan that's been identified and laid out, and that's not really a change, but that's the direction I'd like to see it continue.
Thank you. You were a part of the team that passed our shirts-wearing landslide fashion, and you slipped and said, "limited results." I made a note of that, and I would disagree. Thank you.
Commissioner Liken?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Deputy, thank you very much for applying for this position, and I really appreciate you very much. As you know, I've had the opportunity to serve as a mayor. You'd like to thank any more commissioners? So this question kind of goes along with that, and that is, tell us about your experience with public engagement. Please include the groups you have worked with and how you have built and maintained relationships.
Well, it's a big question. Many years of public engagement. It started off March 9 of 1988, when I was hired as a deputy sheriff in Lane County. Our job is public engagement. Our daily routine is interacting with the community. I think in the more formal role where you're speaking of, probably began in mid-late '90s after promotion to supervisor. And I worked with, I was assigned as a contract supervisor, where I managed several annual contracts for Sheriff's Office services, cities of Lidding, Crestwell, Rain Patrol, Dooms Park contract, State Parks contract with Dooms Patrol. And in the course of those efforts, certainly with the cities, required a monthly council meeting presence and working with those communities and their councils, their mayors, their elected staff, and the community members that were providing input on the service You know, more specific in the law enforcement, I've been part of the supervision of many inter-agency teams. The INET team we've coordinated with for years, the local inter-agency drug team. I have supervised and participated in the creation of the Lane County Interagency Deadly Force Investigation created by Senate Bill 111. And I've supervised the deployment of that team over several activations in Lane County. I've supervised the Lane County Major Crimes Team, which was comprised of seven police agencies, the district attorney's office, and the medical examiner's office during my time as a detective supervisor, required significant media engagement and multi-agency coordination and engagement. And it's, you know, it covers the gamut, and I continue in roles of executive management. I'm the captain of the police division now on my assignment as chief deputy. I have routine community engagements and public speaking and representing Lane County as a whole and the Sheriff's Office specifically.
Thank you. Commissioner Stewart? Thanks, Byron, for your stay and for going through this process for our issue. My question is, tell us about your experience building a public safety team. What steps did you take, and what did you consider in your decision?
Well, I think I've actually created several public safety teams at the small, micro level throughout my career as a supervisor and manager. And they include the inter-agency teams that I just spoke of. And then more broad, outside the organization, beyond the inter-agency teams that are specifically focused, the public safety team of Lane County's public safety system, all of the managers and the directors of those agencies and the participants in the community groups that are effective. So it runs a broad spectrum of public safety team. I think, kind of pick a middle target and identify a team of the Lane County Major Crimes Team that was headed up, managed, and organized by the Lane County Sheriff's Office for several years. We're still in this process. The Sheriff's Office for many years has not been positioned to provide all services for all people, for all types of events. And we realized early on that there are many small partner agencies in Lane County that were similarly positioned. We all were short resources. We got together, we coordinated an idea to create a team approach to major crimes in Lane County, you know, ones you come to mind first, or homicide, but it included more than that. And there was a process of organizing that team, maintaining training, and determining the best fit for a team composition to work together to be most effective with the limited resources we had. You know, it was a collaborative effort, and I think that works in many ways. We do that today with the team, the inter-agency deadly force investigation team, maintaining that team as a ready presence to respond, as an ongoing collaboration between the agencies involved and how we select the participants. And many times, the selection of the team membership, I let default to the active team members to make sure that they're recruiting people that work within their team, that they can work with together and be productive together. Identify the key players, the key people to be the strength and the leadership on those teams, and let them develop and create their team, and we look forward.
Commissioner Sorensen?
Thank you very much, Chief Deputy Trapp. First of all, I want to thank you for your service to the Lane County Sheriff's Office over your many years and the public. And welcome back to the Board of Commissioners. My question is, describe the kind of organizations for which you would like to work. If you could change one thing in your current or most recent position, what would it be?
Just to clarify, a change in my recent position as chief deputy sheriff?
Yeah, yeah. If you could change one thing in your current or most recent position?
You know, the kind of organization that I would like to work for is exactly what we have with the Lane County Sheriff's Office. It would be great if we had resources. It would be great if we could participate more fully with the community, provide a more robust service delivery. Without that, this organization is still phenomenal. I've grown up here with this organization. I can't say it strongly enough of how committed our people are, how committed the deputies, the support staff, the supervisors, the command staff are to truly providing quality public service with integrity and honor. And I can't ask for more than that. My hope is that we will strengthen and continue in that fashion for years to come. And I hate to keep going back to the resource issue, but that really is, if there was one thing to change, it'd just, it'd be nice to have the resources to be able to effectively provide the service level without constant stress and strain and the feeling of competing with our friends at the management team table without tickets, which might, I think that would go a long way in strengthening relationships between departments where we're not competing for the same level of resource. And it would allow people, I think, to relax and look more focused on the actual service delivery as opposed to just trying to stay alive.
Thank you very much.
Any other follow-ups from the board? Well, I'd like to thank you, Chief Deputy, for applying and coming in. We really appreciate your service to Lane County, and it was really nice to have two law enforcement officials with long experience and command experience applying to this position, provide the board a choice. We're going to probably recess here in a few minutes to deliberate, and whether we come to a decision or not would be happened in executive session here. But I really appreciate you applying, and we'll probably hear from us relatively soon. Don't worry about it. Thank you for coming in. And I'd like to take a minute to thank Marcia Edwards and our HR staff for assisting the board in this process. I can't say how appreciative it is the board is of having that help in running an open and transparent process to replace an elected official. This is the second time on the board I've had to do this. We did it with the Fraser before. Processor, sorry. And it's really important that we maintain that integrity in the process. So with that, the board is going to go into executive session. So I think we're looking for my chair language, and I grabbed the wrong language. If you'll give me a minute, I'll look at my chair language to read this into exec session. So the Board of County Commissioners will meet in executive session to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to, that's negation, sorry. I got it. Sorry, let's start that one more time. The Board of County Commissioners will meet in executive session to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent. This executive session is held pursuant to ORS 1926602A, which allows the Board of Commissioners to meet in executive session for the purposes listed above. And we will be coming back into public session after the executive session. So we are going to recess into executive session now, and thank you. here, and we are in the process of appointing a new sheriff. We've met executive session, and we're out of executive session and have the option to make a decision in public. I'd like to look to the board to see if there's somebody that wishes to make a motion. Commissioner Stewart?
Chair, I'd like to move that we appoint Byron Trapp as the interim Lane County Sheriff to replace outgoing Sheriff Turner, for the majority of his term.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Sorensen?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. It's with great pleasure that I get to make this motion. I believe we had two very good candidates that we're going to give you today with great experience and great commitment to improving their community. And I believe that Mr. Trapp is, with his service, he's served in, I believe, every position in the current Sheriff's Department, has great experience. He has incredible connections with the community and his employees that work in the Sheriff's Department, his family there as a sheriff. And I have full confidence that he will be able to continue the great work that's taken place in our Sheriff's Department under incredibly challenging restrictions. So with great confidence, I make this motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorensen?
To Sheriff Trapp, I'd like to congratulate you on your appointment today and look forward to continuing to work with you in the new role that you'll be having. I'm supporting this motion to make certain that there is continuity in the Sheriff's Office, and I was quite impressed with the amount of appreciation and loyalty and devotion that your friends and colleagues, both in and out of the Sheriff's Office, who work with you. And I think that speaks highly to your leadership and character. I'm well aware that this is a really tough job. I'm well aware that this is a really tough job. I've never been the sheriff, but I've consoled a number of sheriffs over the years, and it's a very difficult job, and I think this is a good partnership between the Board of Commissioners and yourself, and I'm really pleased that you would step up, not only to seek the position of being appointed sheriff, but also to seek the election. I think that's a very important part of the continuity. So I just wanted to thank you and to thank everyone who participated in this process, the public that testified at the public comment, and also people that provided us information about you, as well as Chief Sanders. Thank you.
Commissioner Lichen and Commissioner Trapp.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And first of all, I'd like to echo Commissioner Stewart's comments at the very beginning. We were very, it was very good to have two party choices for us during this time to take a look at who we appoint as the new sheriff, but I'm very proud to support Chief Deputy Trapp. Actually, I've known Chief Deputy Trapp for many years, and in fact, he was a customer of one of my businesses a long time ago. But it's separating the personal and professional. First of all, I think it's something that Commissioner Sorensen just brought up, the continuity piece. Appreciate the leadership that the Sheriff Turner, DA Gardner, and Alicia Hayes from Health and Women's Services that put together and co-chaired the 10-year public safety plan. And I think that's key, and Chief Deputy actually during the interview process brought that up and how important that plan is. He's committed to the plan, and I think it's a real opportunity for the sheriff's department and for Lane County as a whole to have that plan in place as we move forward. So I think having that continuity, plus the fact is that he is in the position of chief deputy, he's prepared and has been prepared to step into this position. In a sense, he's the chief operating officer of the sheriff's department, so he's in this position now to continue on, and the fact that he's interested in obviously running for reelection, or running for election, excuse me, in 2016 is also key during this process. But I'm very proud to support Chief Deputy Trapp as our new sheriff for Lane County.
Commissioner Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Chief Deputy Trapp, Chief Sanders would have made a great sheriff. There's no question about it. You had some tough competition during this morning's interviews, but I've got to state this, he had tougher competition. The way you talked about your involvement in Lane County, your years of involvement, you've been here since your early career, 27 years. You talked about your wife being from here, your kids are from here, but the most important thing that you said this morning that really struck me right here is, "I was Lane County proud before it became our motto." I love that. And you weren't just saying it, you've demonstrated that to me. You know, not too long ago, I spent an entire day with you in Portland. You were in some very difficult hearings that we were going through, and I had a chance to talk to you about things in life that had nothing to do with public safety, and I really had got an insight that day regarding you as a family man, you as an individual, and you as a man outside of uniform. And it really confirmed to me that we have made the right choice today. We have a great new sheriff. You're following in some pretty big footsteps, there's no question about that, but I know that you and Sheriff Turner worked very closely over the last couple of years. You know, when we were working on the sheriff's levy together two years ago, you stepped out and you got in front of the public. We asked the public very discreetly, who would they like to see talking about the levy? Who do they trust? And they mentioned the sheriff and the sheriff's staff. And you were there, we passed the levy in landscape fashion, uh, landscape. That too, but in a, I mean, the shrubbery was a main. In landslide fashion, I have every bit of confidence that we've made the right decision today. Thank you very much for applying. Thank you for acquitting yourself very nicely during the interviews today, and I look forward to working with you many, many years ago.
And I'll spend a moment here just to say first thank you to former Chief Saunders for applying. He's definitely a career law enforcement professional with command experience and gave us a legitimate choice in this process, and I was happy to be able to go through a process where we opened it up publicly and had a very open and transparent process. So I appreciate Maury stepping forward and applying. It takes a lot of courage to put yourself out there like that. I also appreciate the public for all their testimony and for the emails and voicemails that we got, supporting various candidates and providing information to us. But I was most impressed, I think, with the support from other agencies that the chief deputy received, and it was that, and the one thing he said in his interview was about public safety being a system as a whole and not focusing on just the Lane County Sheriff's Department. And that was really important to me because really, we have an overall public safety system that runs from the deputy that's patrolling out in Florence area to the addition and treatment professional working at Lab of Family Services. It's a spectrum that provides that whole system. And having the support of that whole system and having partnered with them over the years and developed those relationships, I believe that Chief Deputy will be able to step in as sheriff and continue those relationships in rebuilding Lane County's public safety system back to what it should be, because we all understand that it's not adequate today and that it needs improvement. So I really appreciate Byron stepping forward, and I want to thank Maury for stepping forward also, and I think that we in Lane County have a great interim sheriff moving forward, and I look forward to the opportunity to improve our public safety system in partnership with our new sheriff. So with that, any other comments from the board? If there's no further discussion to the motion, I'd like to call a vote on order number 15042201, which is in the matter of appointing Byron Trapp as Lane County Sheriff. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Now, soon to be Sheriff Trapp. I guess it won't be till April 30th, and this is subject to a background check, but I'd like to offer, I'd like to offer Chief Deputy a moment if he wants to comment to the board or if he wants to come up and have a minute to speak to us.
First, let's start by saying thank you. Thank you for your confidence in me. Thank you for your confidence in the sheriff's office and the standing and place to carry it forward. This is an incredible honor. I have the support, been made very aware of the support that I have from my sheriff's office family, Lane County family, my own family, and I'm very honored. And as I said in my comments, I'm committed to continuing the trajectory we have, I'm committed to maintaining the integrity and the character of our organization, and I look forward to this with great anticipation. Thank you very much.
So if there's no other business to the board, seeing and hearing none, I will adjourn the board meeting, and we will have a regular meeting. I think our next one is in May, so we'll see.